Ashley.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Is Mike here? Dustin?
Here.
Myself is here. Who, so we've got four of us, all right?
Correct.
I didn't miss anybody. Okay. Mike is, Mike will be on, he just must be behind. All right, we had roll call, we'll go to the agenda amendments. Ashley had two. We'll put them under, the first one, we'll go under new business. We'll just say Flag Park. And the other one will go under unfinished business, under E, and we'll just say pool. Does anybody else have anything? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll offer.
Ashley?
I'll second Paul.
Paul, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll go down to public participation, and I'll let you take over, Vicky.
Okay, I am going to allow Kristen here to talk. And she should be, if she can unmute herself, okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. All right. Well, hi, everybody. I'm Kristen Tillitson. I will be speaking today on behalf of the Big Stone County Animal Rescue. If you don't already know, we are a foster-based nonprofit rescue. We started, it'll be two years in August. Our mission is to rehome unwanted stray cats and dogs, provide vet care, search out grants to improve animal lives, and perform community education in our area. Our goal this evening is to start a dialogue in regards to initiating a working relationship with the city of Ortonville and its police department. In doing this, we hope to support the efforts of the city concerning at-large stray and feral animals. We have gotten some community concerns that have reached out to us regarding mainly the pound and just concerns of the animals in the pound if they're cared for humanely. So they, of course, since we're here, reach out to us, and so it's kind of made us want to reach out to you guys. I would say to start with point one, we are interested in possibly becoming a first response point for the police department if an animal is found at large. Well, we cannot guarantee that we would have the space to assume care of the animal because our space is limited. We would love to serve as the starting point. By doing this, the rescue could arrange vet care if needed. We could administer frontline flea and tick medications, heartworm preventative, that kind of thing. And with My Garage and Foster Homes, I think basically to start with, the first three to five day hold would be My Garage. It is better temperature controlled. We've done some research, and below 20 degrees and above 85 degrees has been identified by vets and animal protection agencies as some risk factors for potential health problems, like frostbite, heat stroke, that kind of thing. We feel like if we could be a first response point, we could possibly eliminate some of those concerns. And we would continue to abide by a three-day or five-day hold, whatever is needed, so that an owner can try and find their animal if it is indeed lost. Point two, if the rescue would be unable to take the animal due to limited space, or if the city or PD decide we can't move forward with us being a first response point, we are asking for consideration that maybe a limited number of volunteers could have access points to the impounded animal. Again, maybe one or two to start with if need be, where we can, again, offer those possible vet checks or medications that could be needed. Hoping that there's a possible way for this to be done via a waiver we could sign, or even supervised visits. Supervised visits, again, then we would have to involve somebody else. We'd love to free you guys up where you didn't have to do that, but we understand we need to start somewhere. And then, point... Oh, also, along with that point, following that initial holding period, we would love to take over assuming responsibility for the animal so that we could adopt the animal out. We do do some background checks, some reference checks, vet reference checks for all our animals. We have a contract signed that requires the animal to be spayed and neutered. And then, in the future, if the adopter cannot keep the animal for some reason, the animal comes back to us to be readopted out. So hopefully, it eliminates ever being found at large again. Last point today, we are interested because of the community concerns and involvement that we feel is out there in going ahead and raising some funds on our own to help improve conditions at the current pound. Doing, purchasing some things like the raised hammock beds, which are easily cleaned and common in other shelters. Possibly some wind and sunscreen, or some shading and protection, some heated water bowls in the winter if needed. And just some things we could do to improve the current pound. So I think that's it at this time to start with, but I thank you for your consideration and time, and we look forward to hopefully working together.
Vicky, is there anybody else?
I see that we have a few others on there. I will... Kristen said she didn't see a raised hand, so I'm just going to allow next Sarah to speak. If she wants to, if she doesn't, she can decline.
Yep, this is Sarah.
Oh, good.
I wasn't sure if anybody could see or hear me. I wasn't sure if I was even on. I could hear Kristen, but that was as far as I could see, so. Yeah, just to give my support to Kristen and the rescue and try to open some communication up between the city of Ortonville and the rescue, I think would be, is, you know, kind of our goal here, and something we look forward to doing, you know, working with you guys. And I'm not sure if everybody realizes, like, in the bigger towns, when there's a humane society, the police department brings it directly to humane society. Of course, we don't have that. We're not, you know, we don't have a humane society, but the rescue is their next closest thing to it. So, you know, if there's any way we can work together, relieve some of the things that the police have to do with the animals. That's kind of what we are looking for, so.
Okay, and I see Wanda is on. I'm gonna hit talk for her also, because I think she had wanted to speak, and I've unmuted you, Wanda, if you'd like to speak.
Whatever has already been said, I just reinforce that, and we're into making it as easy as possible for the animals and for anybody else that would need to deal with them once they're in the pound. That's about it.
Kristen, do you think there is anybody else that wanted to speak?
I don't think so. I'm guessing Hannah is there with you, Sarah?
Yep.
Is Mary Tafe on? I don't know if Mary wanted to speak.
Okay, I'll hit Mary. I've unmuted Mary.
Hi, this is Mary. And I'm just in support of what the rescue is trying to do, hoping that we can make some amendments to the current policy that would allow us to volunteer in ways that would hopefully take the pressure off the police department and make things easier. And so I'm just gonna end with that. Thank you.
Anybody else, Vic?
I don't, I don't think so. I will leave everyone here's audio on if you guys are gonna have a discussion. Otherwise, I will remove their audio if you're going to move forward from here. If you had questions for them, I'll leave them on.
I think, I think what we should do in this situation, because we can't make any decisions tonight, we're gonna have to go through some legal aspects of this. I think what we need to do, I'm gonna ask for, first, I'm gonna ask for volunteers that are... We're gonna have a committee that can get together and put some of this policies, what they exactly want to see. And then, at the same time, when we get that, when they come up with something, before it's even brought to the council, if they can meet with David or present it to David, so that we, that we, we're not spending a lot of time at the council discussing what we're gonna be able to do, or what we can and can't do. We'll bring a policy, and then we just vote on it that way. Is there anybody on the council? You haven't got only four of us here, that would, Ashley, would you be willing to work with them? What I'd like to see, maybe Ashley, and then Jason, since Jason is directly, really, right now is directly involved with it. And then, Chris, if you could get a couple of your people.
Sure.
Other?
Absolutely.
And, and maybe what you need to do is figure out a time that you guys can all get together, you know, meet someplace. It might be easier, since it's a very small group, you can, you could meet it down at the city hall. You only have four or five of you. And kind of work at it that way. That would be my best suggestion.
If they would like to do a Zoom meeting, I'm more than happy to host a Zoom meeting for them also, so.
Thank you, thank you.
That'd be great, Vicky, thank you.
Yes, that would be probably easiest, and then I'm just gonna make an assumption, I don't know for sure, but I'm assuming that David could be in a Zoom meeting and give some particulars when you get, guys get down to the very specifics of it. Does that sound reasonable to you, Shar? Okay.
That sounds good.
Okay, okay. So we don't, we don't, we'll form that committee, we don't need a name for it. You guys can work on that and come up with something. I don't think it has to be complicated.
No, we want to keep it as easy as possible. We are also working on kind of getting some quotes on our own liability insurance, but that's taking some time, and it may be too expensive. It's looking at about $1,500 a year for us to do on our own. That's why we'd love to try and do some sort of joint thing under a volunteer or a waiver, but of course, Dave McClosen would know more.
Yeah.
How we can go that route.
And that's why I think we need to do it in a committee, because we could sit and talk till this, about this until eight o'clock tonight. We don't have any, we're not to the specifics, so what we want to do, I think if you can, you've got a, you had a really good plan there, Chris, and then the committee wants to fine tune it, and then shoot it by David. And when David okay's what we've decided to do, or what we can and can't do, I don't think there's gonna be any opposition on the council to it, as long as we can get it through legal.
Absolutely.
Does anybody else on the council want to say?
Should we just set up a time to have the meeting, since we're here? And Jason can look at his schedule? And then Kristen, you can talk with, with your individuals within that, and invite them to it?
Sure.
Should we set for a Zoom meeting? Would probably be the easiest for majority of us.
Sounds great.
Mark, what kind of looks good on your schedule for either later, towards the end of the week, or beginning of next week? I'm, I can do anything if it's five o'clock and after.
I'm pretty open as well.
I'm, I'm pretty open as well, I guess, at this point in time.
Okay, how about, with this Thursday, the ninth, at five o'clock work?
Works for me.
Works for me.
Mark's just looking here.
It does not work for me.
Okay.
Oh.
All right. How about this coming Monday, the 13th? That work for everybody?
Works on my end.
Yep, I'm good.
Okay, so the 13th at five o'clock, we'll do a Zoom meeting, and Vicky normally sends out the invites to us.
That sounds good.
Kristen, if you just want to let her know who the other participants will be, so they can get that Zoom invite as well.
Perfect, I can do that.
All right.
Shar?
You guys on 13th at five.
All right, thank you.
Do we want them, Shar, just to initially kind of roughly put this together, and then after they do that, then go to David with it? Okay.
And talk to Dave, or otherwise, if they have more than one meeting, invite Dave to the second meeting.
Okay.
Needs to be changes or something.
Okay. That sounds good.
Some ideas. I think you should have the first meeting, get it kind of organized, then give it to Dave, and then maybe he wants to visit with the committee about it.
Yeah, yeah.
That sounds good.
Okay, thanks so much. Thanks for volunteering, Ashley.
No problem.
Is there any other public participants? If not, we'll go on to the consent agenda. All those marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine, and will be acted upon with one motion. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll offer, Ashley.
I'll second.
Paul? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That means we are down to staff reports, anything?
I think I have a couple little things.
Okay.
Emily, of course, is at the swimming pool now, or just finishing up. And she said they've had a really a pretty good first three days, I don't know about today. They had Big Stone City brought a bus of 40-plus people, old kids over, and they get some swimming. They've had, I think they had 20 the first day, 40 or 41 of the days. I mean, they, it's not as what it normally is, but it's increasing number-wise. Everything seems to be going okay with that.
Good.
I know, I know Ashley wants to talk about the masks, and I guess they really, everybody's been bringing their waiver forms, and they've only had a very, I guess, maybe one complaint about the mask that we've heard about. So that hasn't been too big of a problem. Second thing talking about is our construction meetings on Thursday have been going well. The construction is going very well without much rain. We're moving forward, hoping that it'll be blacktopped all around the school before, if the school opens this fall. If everything is going well, they'll be taking trees down next week in the ravine, you know, in the fifth, fifth street ravine here, and they'll start that process, so things are looking good. They poured sidewalk around the school today, so it's moving forward.
Anybody have questions?
I would, I would ask, as far as the last year's project where the grass has been seeded on the boulevards, you know, I spoke with Ben with Apex, and I know the contractor's working on notifying, he'd like to see the homeowners mow that grass right now. It's, it's kind of weedy and everything, but, but young, good grass is coming now.
Paul, they're sending out a brochure, or deliver, to the, to the homeowners around there, because we did talk last week, or at the construction meeting, how, you know, people don't realize when they should start mowing it, but that'll help the grass when they can get those weeds out of there. So they are supposed to be sending some kind of brochure around, and are telling people what they should do with their grass. The company that's been doing the turf has been in town several times, putting some water down now. So in spots, you can see some pretty good grass coming, and other spots it's sparse. But the contractor is responsible for getting green grass to grow, so we're just waiting on them. They're trying hard now with the watering.
Okay.
Anybody else have questions on staff? Jason, have you got anything?
The only thing, I guess I could let you guys know is our squad car did show up. The, our old one has been sent away to get tore down, and the equipment put in the new one. Hopefully, we should probably see our new squad back here on Friday, and then just a matter of working with Pro Image to get decals put on it. So I'm saying probably within a week to two weeks, we will have the new one out on the road. That's all I got.
Okay.
Jean, I would ask, I guess I would ask to, are we, you know, is everything back opened up? Like down at the park, those bathrooms, and then the fish cleaning station?
Yep. Scott would be the one to answer, or Shar, either one.
I can answer that. Everything is open, I believe, except the senior centers. Restrooms are not open yet, but the Lakeside Park and Riverside Park bathrooms are open. Fish cleaning station has been open for quite a while.
Okay. All right, great. Would this be a time, Shar, I know with our committee with the cleanup, kind of been working on possibly something for September to do with the National Guard in town? Have you been involved in that, Shar?
Bill was in and talked a little bit about it, about it. That's about it. I don't think it's come to council yet to be discussed.
Yeah, just, just for, for everyone here, just working on that, maybe a cleanup for tree branches and the like. And the guard sounded like possibly, they like to do, in September, they like to donate time for the community. And so trying to coordinate something like that, so we'll continue to work on that as a committee. Our cleanup committee, I guess. But it's, you know, it's very preliminary, but just wanted to get it out there for your information.
And I know also Bill has wanted to come and talk to you to tell about the, your cleanup, your city cleanup. When the bills come in for all the dumpsters and things, and we're still waiting on some of the costs of the cleanup yet.
Okay.
Any, Sam, do you have anything?
I guess the only thing I'd say is probably, we pulled the generator out of the waste treatment plant down there, and got the diesel tank moved out, and now we're gonna get the pad poured, hopefully in the next week or two. The new one's at the shop, someone sets, poured down there and cured, we'll get the new one installed, so.
Okay, good.
Sam, is that, how's that fueled? Is that gonna be, the diesel tanks come out, that won't be diesel then, I take it?
Yes, it's gonna be natural gas down there now.
Okay, that's right, okay.
Yep.
That'll be, that'll be a big improvement.
Yeah, it'll be nice.
Anybody else have anything for staff? We'll go down, we said we just put this in new business, Ashley, Flag Park.
I was just curious about the main, the maintenance of that park. I had, you know, it's that new one that we just acquired across from Burke Knr's. And just if we're, if we might put down some new seed and different things like that, and just the trimming of it, and kind of how we're maintaining that one.
Well, what's happening with that, we just realized within the last couple of weeks that we got the title clear to it now, so. I think, I think Dylan's been doing it, but now the city will take it over and do the mowing and the trimming and stuff. And I know they're gonna pour some, another, some more concrete down there, too. The concrete doesn't quite go to the sidewalk now from the flag area, so they're gonna do some work down there. But it'll happen, but it's gonna take a few weeks probably before we get it organized again.
For the concrete, you mean?
The concrete, and the, they'll start, they're mowing, they'll be starting to mow it now, since we
Okay.
became our property.
All right.
One, one thing, on the other end of town by Subway, that little, I don't know, area, is, is there a way, maybe for Dylan or something, to clean that up? I know the kiosk area, they did a lot of work there, looks great. But this would be more down by Subway.
Talking about that little triangle, kind of.
Yeah. Is there something, or what's commonly done there?
Well, part of it, Paul, too, we, the city crew did a lot of work down at the information center. They took all the rock out and got it, the dirt and everything, and then Dylan came in and finished it up, and it looks very nice.
It does.
I, I, really nice, yeah. And I think that's the EDA thing, and I think they're helping take, sponsoring that also. I think Dylan was wanting to donate, but I think that we're going to be some, there's some payment involved there. But I think at the other end of town, that problem with that triangle, I think at one time, Scott and his crew were talking about taking all those rocks out of there and seeding it, too, because now it's so hard to keep it looking decent with the rocks and the weeds and everything else. But I'm not sure what's happening right now. Maybe Scott can reiterate his plan on this.
I guess he does, may have a plan.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, the, one thing, that's our plan, but we have to wait, because that's all state right away.
We gotta get permission?
Well, we're gonna have to ask them if we can go in there and dig all that stuff out and, and stuff, because they have signs and stuff that, they were put in by the state of Minnesota.
Well, let state right away, why don't we tell them to clean it up?
Well, that's what my thought was, but, so we're waiting for them to get back to me on what they want to do, or all they want to proceed.
Okay, okay, so you've been talking to them, Scott?
Yep.
Okay, okay.
Scott, while I got you here, I know we, we discussed a little bit briefly with the alleys, and you're coming along on them. I know we had talked about 20 blocks of alley, but how are you, how are you sitting on that? We probably just about did that many already. I plan on doing a lot more, but right now, we're waiting for gravel again. We did, Thursday, we hauled 14 loads, and then we're short on gravel, so we're waiting for Jay again. Soon as we get gravel and stuff, we'll start doing some more. How many, how many total blocks are there, do you think, or, I mean, you know, we shot for 20, but the cost for doing them all, is that, how's that work? Well, we're gonna do the ones that mainly needed, because, you know, it doesn't pay to do just a few of them, and then leave the worst ones, or, you know, and the biggest thing is, just takes the time to get in there and do them. Sure, I understand that. Didn't know how many, if there's 50 or 60, or? No, there's, depends. And on some of them, you know, like on the one behind you, well, you classify that as one block, but actually, it's probably long enough to be two blocks. You know, like, you know, some of them are quite long, but we're doing, all the ones with the bigger holes, we're doing them first, and then the ones that are holding up, we're doing them later on, trying to get them all, as many as we can before winter. Sure, okay, all right.
And we feel like we have all the correct equipment, right? Or we, do we need to get different equipment for the alleyways, or how are we feeling about that?
Well, I bet, I was looking online at pull-type scrapers, because we can't get into most of our alleys with the mortar grader. It's too big and too wide, too many trees, too many garages.
Yeah.
A pull-type blade that we can turn from, rotate from side to side, is gonna run us anywhere from $8,000 to $15,000. And if we get what, the size we really need, we're probably gonna have to upgrade our tractor, because our 1965 Massey isn't gonna have enough hydraulic power to do it. Do you, Scott, wouldn't just a box scraper, like you got, only that could tilt side to side, work for less money? Well, yeah, but then you're only, you know, the tilt, the box scraper, see, that's what everybody says, it just pushes it out to the side. That's the idea of the box, though, right? Because it holds it in there? Right. But they say it's, we're not leaving as much of a crown. So if you have the box with the tilt side to side? Right, but then you're gonna end up cutting more on the outside to leave the crown with one like that. You're gonna end up cutting along people's driveways, or along their, the edge of their ground, or their yards, and they complain because there's a drop-off there, and it's wrecking their mower, and... But yeah, we could look at one of them, but it's gonna, the main thing is gonna be to, you know, you're gonna have to try to... The biggest thing is, the garbage truck pushes it down on the side, and that's pushing it out more than the box scraper is. Yeah, I'd like to get them out of there and keep them out of there, out of those alleys. I know it. I'd agree with that.
Well, don't we, don't we do some streets that have alleys, but the, the, the garbage truck doesn't go down them?
They, they go down some, they go, like on some, like up by Paul's, and what is, is it, Paul, is it recyclings in the alley, and the garbage is in the front, or is it vice versa? It's the other way around, but yeah, they, what I, up here, they're in every alley, and it shows. Yeah.
Yeah, should we consider making alleys off limits for garbage? I mean, would, would that help? I mean, I have to put mine out front. I mean, is that something that, I'm not saying we make a motion now, but is that something that we should be considering?
I imagine that we'd have to talk to Northern Waste in the contract, probably, wouldn't we?
Well, I don't think they'd care. They'd probably like it if they Well, I don't think they'd care. They'd probably like it if they didn't have to go in alleys.
Yeah. Yeah, the drivers probably would.
That definitely probably would be something to look into though, including if it's gonna help maintain those alleyways more.
Yeah.
You know?
What committee would that be? Shar's, it, who?
Street and Utility.
Why don't we, why don't we just ask Street and Utility to discuss that and see what they think about? Just eliminating alley for, for garbage.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Scott, would you be able to, um, maybe have some quotes for those different blades and things that you're talking about?
I'm sure you want them.
Would, would you want to bring some maybe to the next council meeting, just so we can kind of see what's there or?
But it should.
Oh yeah, that'll give me more time than that.
And then if we need to, then we can have it in the, have it in the budget if we need to next year if it's not.
Right, that's what Shar and I talked about today, to make sure we could have.
Street and Utility first.
Okay.
I think that.
And then come back through the right channels.
That'd be great, yeah.
Comes through the budget committee anyway. If the Street and Utility really thought it was necessary to purchase this, then Scott would put it in the budget and come to the budget committee and.
Very.
Perfect, good. I just want to make sure that you got all the stuff that we need too, so that we can maintain those correctly.
Yeah. Along those, along those lines, Shar, what's, what's a timeframe with the budget? Are we gonna meet as a council for a work session on that? Or what kind of timeframe would that be?
Great minds.
Well, yeah, Jean and I talked about this just before.
Good, good.
And actually, we're just in the process. I haven't even got the department heads, head stuff out yet. But we have to certify the budget by September, the end of September, so we have plenty of time. And I think the budget committee needs to meet one time and discuss a few things. And then I think you need to have a workshop probably like you had last year.
Yeah.
That sounds great.
And I know, I think Jason, probably the reason with the squad car, I mean, there, there are delays. But I've heard it with, with any kind of equipment, uh, snowplow trucks, uh, loafers, anything, I, you'll be amazed, they're out as much as a year, year and a half with some of that stuff. So plan accordingly. If there's things in the.
That's, that's what Shar and I talked about today. We, we will, it's Kim and I and Mike, I think, are budget committee.
That's true.
We'll just start the preliminaries as, as quick as we can get together. And then I would think latest mid-August, but early August, I think we should call for a, a workshop. And, and really, you know, meet with, with department heads and just to kind of, not to beat a dead horse, but this is when we, this is what our most important job really is, the budgeting. And this is when if people have, you know, I, this doesn't sound right, but pet projects or they have things that we should, we should be moving forward on. The time to talk about those is at the budget committee. It isn't next March when we decide all of a sudden we want to do something and now we're wondering where we're gonna get the money from. Those projects and things that we want. So talk to your constituents and what they're concerned about and what they want so that we can build stuff into the budget and we can work on that at that workshop. That would really help a lot.
Yeah.
I do have one question about that, that park by the pool. Is there any plans of changing the wood chips in that one like we did down at the, the park by the lake into the, with the P rock? It just looks so nice down there.
We've talked about it and that's, actually I'm waiting for GCC to get some more of the P rock that we used, we began with because they, they had a crush up somewhere and I don't know if they've got caught up yet.
Okay.
But we, yeah, we talked about doing that for that one too.
Yeah, that looks.
Actually getting the P rock is cheaper and faster than, otherwise you gotta go way up north to get a load of chips to put, you know, wood chips put in there. And that's a lot more expensive than the P rock is.
Yeah, and it looks so, so nice down there. I've had so many compliments on how that looks.
Good.
And it's a lot nicer to plan, the P rock, especially for the kids.
And we don't have to close the parks because the ducks are on top of the wood chips having their nest.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll go down to the unfinished business, just Ashley brought this up and I'll let you take the floor, Ashley, on the pool mask.
I've just had some, some constituents concerned about the mask policy of the pool up there. And so I thought just us kind of discussing it and see if we want to continue that or just highly encourage the use of a mask up there. The CDC doesn't require a mask, they encourage for guidelines and so does Minnesota guidelines. They encourage the use of a mask up there. I've, literally I've had parents tell me they're not gonna go to the pool this year because of that. Um, but, so I don't know what your guys' kind of thoughts are there. I would be completely fine and for just encouraging the use of masks. And definitely for our staff, if they feel the most comfortable wearing a mask, please wear one. Like everyone has a right to wear one.
We aren't giving our staff any option. They are, it's not optional up there. They're wearing the mask. We're not asking our staff what their opinion is on wearing it. They're wearing the mask. That's part of working at the pool. And personally, if you don't want to go swimming because, take your kids there because you have to wear a mask, then don't go swimming. And I will tell you, this is really nice down at the beach because I went there on the Fourth of July and it's pretty nice swimming in the water. Emily come out with that and that's what she wanted and, and, no, I shouldn't say that was her thing that she thought we should do. And I'm in favor of continuing with it. If the, if others feel differently, uh, that's up to you guys.
I just know all of the pools around us are not requiring that. Every, we, we're having them sign a waiver when they come in. I believe we're doing the, the question health checks before they come in as well. And all of those different things.
When we, when you wear the mask though, Ashley, you're not wearing the mask to protect yourself. You're wearing the mask to protect the people around you because none of us have N ninety-five masks.
No, none of us do.
No, but.
So I'm just saying though, I mean, there have been complaints. And so I'm making that voice that there has been complaints about this being a requirement there. And none of the other pools around are making it a requirement, so.
I, my opinion is leave it up to your pool director and she felt pretty emphatic about this. I don't think it's a life and death matter. If, if somebody doesn't want to follow the rules, they don't have to, they just don't have to use the pool. I mean, that's not asking too awful much of an individual. Dustin, Paul? We, somebody's gotta say something, we just can't sit here.
Hey, Mayor?
Yeah. Yes.
I know when, when the health inspector was here for the pool, I was up there and she did recommend, she, she recommended that we went with that and that isn't the guidelines, it's a recommendation. But they did recommend that people out that worked in the pool should be wearing masks.
Yeah.
And then I don't know why, her and Emily talked more about it after that, but I know that did come from Department of Health.
Go ahead, Paul.
So are the, are the lifeguards, they're wearing them, I take it?
Yeah, they are.
And so when the kids are in the, so they have.
You can't wear a mask in the pool, it's too dangerous. But immediately when they get out of the pool, if they're not jumping back in, they're supposed to put on their mask right away. So anybody outside the pool has to wear a mask. It's a requirement.
Okay.
Plus sign a waiver, plus do your health check before you go in. Which all the other pools are doing as well is signing a waiver. Every pool is doing that. That is not something that's not being done. I don't know necessarily about how every other pool is doing a health check, but some aren't. I don't think doing the health checks like we are here. She's doing a very good job with that.
Yeah, I, I, I guess I don't know. I, I mean, I, it appears to me it seemed like it'd be very hard to do to try and watch everybody. I, I.
I don't think, the people that are complaining, Paul, are not people with their, the kids. The kids, when they're swimming, the lifeguards aren't saying to a young person, jumps out and runs around a little bit, aren't saying, get your mask on, get your mask on.
No, it's if they don't return to the pool.
Yeah, if they're, if, if they're not going into the pool right away, or if a parent is coming in with their youngster and, and watching them inside the pool, that parent is required to have the mask on. It's the parents that are the ones that are, it's not the kids complaining, it's, it's, it's parents.
And Jean, also, I believe during the break, when they do the sanitizing of the things, then the kids have their masks and they put them on and wait for the pool to open.
Yep. Any more discussion?
No.
Okay. Um, anybody got else, anything before we pay the bills?
Um, I guess, I guess I, one thing with, with, uh, that's coming up in, in the mid-July is those two tax forfeited properties from last year that the houses got taken down. The county has them and they're gonna be auctioning them off. And the one on Monroe is, has got, I think thirty-one hundred and ninety-five dollars against it that this, that was bills. And it sounds like commonly the city just forgives that. But I would imagine that's what we'll be doing again for this, Shar. Is that how that works?
That's usually how it happens because they figure if there's that much assessments or whatever onto the property, nobody's going to buy it if, if they can get it out back into the tax base, it'll be advantageous to everybody.
Okay, so there's really nothing we need to do as a council? Okay, thank you.
Anybody, anybody have anything else? If not, I need a resolution to pay the bills.
I'll offer that resolution.
Paul?
I'll second.
Ashley?
Jean, I would have a couple, a question for Shar on.
Okay.
What did we pay for the light fund to the city of Big, or Big Stone City? It was forty-three hundred dollars.
I don't know. I suppose maybe we rented some equipment from them. You know, they do have equipment that we use and then they probably had some supplies that we needed. It takes time to get some conduit and stuff. I don't have it in front of me right now.
Okay, yeah, I apologize.
Back and forth with, with Big Stone City for some, some things.
Okay, okay. And then the other one would be that payment to Allen Ross, that must be for, or how did that go?
That, that's for swimming pool, for expenses. They, they were able to get a bunch of, um, cleaning supplies and, and masks for the guards and a thermometer and everything they needed to be able to open the pool for the, the COVID stuff. I mean, it's just something different than we've had. We're, we're not having any concessions up there this year. We're just having, you know, sanitizers and everything to, to make it as safe as we can for the kids and for the adults.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yeah. I'm good.
Okay, uh, we got the resolution on the floor. Roll call, Ashley?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Dustin?
I'll have to abstain from my part, I guess.
I'll vote yes. Is there anybody, come on. Mike isn't here yet. No, Jake isn't. Okay, resolution passes. Anything else? If not, meeting's adjourned. You going out hand, Paul?
Yeah.
Okay.
See ya.